I call the August 22nd work session agenda, the Portsmouth City Council to a quarter. And Madam Deputy Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Yes. Mr. Cherry.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Lukasberg.
Here.
Mr. Moody. Ms. Simmons. Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mayor Ruff.
Here. And for everybody's information, Councilwoman Simmons is sick and she will not be here tonight. And our city clerk, again, is on vacation, much deserved.
Mm-hmm.
Before we get into the agenda, we have an email that we all got from Claude Parent, the chairman of the school board. And so that the public, and I think the public, everybody in here has got a copy of it. Deputy Clerk, would you read the email?
Yes. "Good morning, City Council members. I'm writing with an appeal, and I hope you will consider my request. I know we don't see eye to eye on school funding. I know we have been passionate on both sides, but I'm asking that we set aside our differences and come together to do what's best for children and the city. My colleagues and I strongly believe the city's latest recommendation would not be in the best interest of our students. Dr. Bracy has been working diligently with the city administration on budget matters throughout the year, and we want to keep the lines of communication open. We'd like to share our concerns with you in a sit-down meeting between the school board and the council. I plead with you to hold off on tonight's vote on the reappropriation, even if just for one week, and give us a chance to talk as school and city officials. This is such a critical time for our schools. We'll have four more schools fully accredited, which last year we had eight, and now we have 12. Students will return in two weeks. This morning, I had the opportunity to welcome 200 new teachers to Portsmouth. We were excited to be working in an urban school division which has unique needs. We want to keep that momentum. We also understand the city has needs and expenses, and we're willing to listen. Please let me know if you will consider this request and hold off on the vote until we've had a chance to come together. Also, as council requested last night, I have attached copies of our full reappropriation proposal that lists our schools' needs. Sincerely, Claude Parent, Portsmouth City School Board Chairman."
Thank you. I have talked or emailed each one of you, and it's my understanding from the discussions and from the email that we have a consensus to postpone this to the next council meeting with the direction to our city manager, and hopefully the school board would do the same, that the city manager and the school superintendent and their staffs work together to reconcile and find common ground and bring it back to us at the next meeting. We would then, when we get to the regular session, need a motion to postpone agenda items 17, 368, 369, 370, and 371 with the direction to the city manager to work with the school board, the school superintendent.
Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, Dr. Bracy and I have already met, and we have made our schedule starting Monday, August 28th for an 11:00 a.m. until Tuesday, August 29th, 11:00 a.m. until with lunch in there, and August 30th, starting at 2:00 p.m.
Good.
So we'll start in here.
When was that established?
I just got through with the...
You did?
Okay. I gave Dr. Patton and the city attorney the feedback. And I've also talked with the school board chairman, Claude Parent, too. So he's aware. And I don't know if he's going to be here tonight, but again, so with that, when we get to the appropriate spot on the agenda, if somebody would give a motion to postpone this with the direction to our city manager, okay?
My only concern, and my response, I sent you an email, was that since Mr. Parent was making this request that he be publicly allowed to speak to it, if that's what we're going to do.
I don't have any problem with that. Has anybody got any problem with that?
I do think we should do this on the front part of the meeting.
Yeah.
In deference to the people who are attending tonight expecting to hear the resolution.
I think that's a very good point. And we've got two front points. In addition to this matter, we have the resolution that we all agreed to. And that is here, too. Does everybody have a copy of that resolution?
I thought we were passing to that.
Oh, good. This is where he's going to start. Give everybody a copy.
Make sure that everybody in here gets a copy of that resolution.
Who will read these, Chief?
Yes. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you, so that everybody knows, because they don't have, would you read the resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution in support of the city of Charlottesville in reaffirmation of the city of Portsmouth commitment to the values of equality, inclusion, diversity, and rule of law. Whereas the violent and racist events that took place on August 11th, 12th, 2017 in Charlottesville were an attack on all citizens of the Commonwealth. And whereas the city of Portsmouth stands in solidarity with the city of Charlottesville in law enforcement. And whereas the independent cities of Virginia play a unique role in our Commonwealth as communities of hope, diversity, and progress. And whereas white nationalists, white supremacism, and neo-Nazism are real threats to the social fabric of our Commonwealth in our country. And whereas free speech is a cornerstone of every right that we have as Americans. However, these organizations promote agendas that are in conflict with our nation's principles of liberty and justice for all and rule of law. And whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia has made progress toward bridging divisions and uniting communities so that our children may inherit a better, more tolerant world. And whereas now is the time to reject hatred, stand up for democracy, and stand together against those who threaten our brothers and sisters. And whereas the city of Portsmouth enjoys a rich diversity of people who live and work here sustaining and supporting our vibrant community. And whereas the city council wishes to preserve, protect, and ensure that all people are welcome and able to fully participate as enfranchised citizens of the city. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Portsmouth, Virginia, that the city of Portsmouth rejects and denounces violent extremism and terrorism of all kinds, including racist, ambiguous ideologies of white nationalists, white supremacists, and neo-Nazis. And be it further resolved that the council of the city of Portsmouth, Virginia encourages all citizens to stay in solidarity with the citizens of Charlottesville by reaffirming our city's commitment to the values equality, inclusion, diversity, and rule of law, adopted by the city council of the city of Portsmouth, Virginia at a meeting held on August 22nd, 2017.
The fourth paragraph, you know, if you're going to identify groups, there's always a threat of leaving a group off. So I think we should add any hate group that promotes violence, racism, because these certainly aren't the only hate groups.
Okay.
There are others that have been identified as well.
Can I get a copy? The copy off of the email isn't verbatim to what was just read. Do we still have?
Well, you don't have the...
I don't have the...
Here's one. Take that.
No.
This is the one I read. You read it exactly.
No, no, no.
No. Dr. Whitaker. Right. The, in the second whereas, that reads Charlottesville and the rule of law.
It was several discrepancies.
Yeah. You're right. This was a earlier draft.
This was the new rule that I get.
And he's going to get the other draft.
That's right.
But to speak to what Bill, white nationalism, white supremacist neo-Nazis, and other hate groups?
Other hate groups that threaten the social fabric of our Commonwealth and our country.
Everybody okay with that?
The only question I have, I mean, is there so many of these groups? If we start naming any of them, you know, I could get a list and we could have three pages of them. So I would think it would be better to just be generic and not list specific names, because each one of these groups, of course, I don't agree with any of them, but each one of these have other groups below them, and it's just, it could go on forever if we start actually making names.
Well, that's a good point, Nathan, because if you leave one group out, they might take that as...
We support them.
That we support them.
But I think you covered that, though, by saying other hate groups, and that just covers the whole waterfront.
And also, these aren't groups, these are ideologies. I'm not trying to identify particular groups, I'm speaking to an ideology.
Well, perhaps.
Well, no, it says, it says, "bigoted ideologies of..."
Well, we need to, I thought our discussion last night was on hate groups. I think we need to zero in on it more than a ideology.
Well, let's, let me read what I think I captured, and see if everybody's in agreement. Whereas white nationalism, white supremacism, neo-Nazism, and other hate groups are real threats to the social fabric of our Commonwealth and of our country. Is everybody in agreement with that? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Antifaism, that's certainly one of them. Antifa, antifa-ism, that's been a group.
Others would cover that.
I just think we should just say generic from the beginning, and just say, any and all hate groups at this time or anywhere in the future. That way, for, you know, previous ones, current ones, and any ones in the future, everybody's covered.
I can support that.
I'm good with what the mayor just read.
Because if you leave one out, you're inviting...
Well, I think that since we addressed Charlottesville, and this is where these issues arose, arise, you know, this is what we want to address in here, so I'm fine with how it's printed now and saying other hate groups.
Yeah.
Because we're in support of Charlottesville and the loss of life that they had for their member Heather. And so we have to address the groups that were present that caused that situation, so...
And I think Bill's recommendation about other hate groups captures everything. So if we could make this change to the one that was sent out, is everybody comfortable with that?
I just wanted to have the actual resolution.
Yeah.
But I think the spirit of it, the spirit of it is...
Okay. All right. We have, I think they're working.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we'll do this as the first item after the adoption of the minutes. And...
Just yet to do something? Do you have to do anything to make that happen?
It's already been updated online.
You have? Okay.
Yes, sir. It's on the printed agenda in the box, and it's online.
Okay.
Along with the resolution that we had.
The direct, the right one? The one that Dr. Lukasberg referred to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that one. But once the city attorney brings the new one, I'll try to get it up there.
All right. So we need to, we'll read these...
Yes, sir.
...when we come through.
Right. And then we'll handle the motion to postpone those four items, or we'll consider the motion. Okay? All right. Having taken care of that, Dr. Patton, we're ready to start the agenda.
Very good, and we apologize, Mayor.
Well, that's okay. Those things happen.
For the mix-up in that ordinance, the city attorney will be bringing it.
Yeah, we just...
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, tonight we have a presentation by the executive director of the Hampton Road Sanitation District, Mr. Ted Henfins. It is because of the bold, four-sided citizens of the region that took place in 1940 to address pollution by voting to approve a referendum that established the Hampton Road Sanitation District. Over the past 77 years, HRSD has developed into one of the premier wastewater treatment organizations in this nation, respected for its outstanding record of compliance with its environmental permits and its commitment to innovation. Our second presentation this evening is a finalization report back on the city council's 2018 state and federal legislative initiatives survey. Mrs. Sherri Neal, Intergovernmental Affairs Manager, is the presenter. That would be followed by the city manager's report, and then the city council liaison reports. Mr. Henfins.
Thank you, Dr. Patton, Mayor, Members of Council. Appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our SWIFT initiative, which is our Sustainable Water Initiative for Tomorrow, which is making a lot of things possible, one of which is a nutrient credit trading agreement we're going to talk about, and it's on your agenda for this evening. So we've been treating wastewater successfully, as Dr. Patton said, for 77 years, and we continue to innovate. As we were looking forward, a couple of years back, we were trying to see what the future held for the region as far as wastewater treatment went, and we realized that one of our big issues was continual change in regulations. You all are very familiar with unfunded mandates, and as a regional wastewater treatment agency, we basically operate under a five-year permit with EPA and DEQ, and every five years, something changes a little bit. And those changes can be significant, requiring significant investment in our infrastructure for the region, and we pass those costs along to our ratepayers. As we looked forward, that was sort of the thing that was going to continue to change, and we're going to continue to see major investments in our systems year after year. And as we thought through that, we said, what if we took our water all the way to drinking water quality? What else could the regulators ask us to do? Now, we aren't challenging them with that, because we're afraid they might come up with something else. But if we take it all the way to drinking water, we've suddenly created a valuable resource from what was wastewater. And at that point, we thought, it's got a very high value to the region, what else could we do with it? About the same time, the Department of Environmental Quality was looking at groundwater in the region and realized that we have a groundwater problem. And most of us don't really pay attention to that. We have surface water, actually plentiful surface water for most of the region for your drinking water, with the exception of James City County, which is 100% developed on groundwater. And then the rest of eastern Virginia relies heavily on groundwater, both for economic development purposes, as well as folks that live in areas that are not connected to city water. Over the last 100 years, basically since the turn of the century, we've depleted that groundwater resource, like we do many other natural resources, without really thinking about the future. And so we've been pumping that down at a rate that it can't sustain. And essentially, that, the ground we sit on has an aquifer below it, basically a layer of sands and shells and gravels that holds water. But the rain that falls in eastern Virginia doesn't get in there, because there's a thick clay layer on top of it. And the clay layer keeps the water in it under pressure, but it doesn't let the groundwater, the rainwater that falls on the ground, get down in there. It hits the top of the clay and actually rolls off into local streams and bodies of water. So the only place that gets recharged is along the fall line. If you think about the geology of Virginia, we sit on this area, the coastal plain, where over many, many millions of years, the sea has risen and fallen. So sea level rise is not new to eastern Virginia. It's new to us since we've been developed. But it's deposited this layer of really nice sands and gravels as it's come and gone over the years. But the rock below us, the bedrock, rises to meet the ground in the area along the 95 corridor. So if you think about all our major cities along 95, where Fredericksburg has the Rappahannock, and you have the falls there, and Richmond, we've got the James River and the falls there. You go up in northern Virginia, Potomac, Great Falls, that's really where the bedrock comes up. And from that point east, we've got this nice layer of sands and gravels, a layer of clay on top of that, that makes this aquifer below us. And the only place it naturally recharges is along that narrow strip along the 95 corridor. So over the years, we've depleted that significantly by pumping it down. So DEQ has proposed reducing permits to most of the large users, and they're doing that. So as we look forward, we saw a need for groundwater, and we had our drinking water potential from our treated wastewater, and it looked like a good match. And so we started investigating, what if we took our drinking water quality water and put it in the ground? Could we help that groundwater situation? And it turns out that the modeling says yes. We can make significant difference for generations to come by putting that water in. And we're talking 100 million gallons a day of water treated to drinking water standards and then pumped into the ground. And that comes with some other benefits. And so one of the ones that we'll talk about is the fact that that reduces our surface water discharges to the Chesapeake Bay. So even though we treat our water to high, high quality, we still have a lot of water that goes out every day. So even though we remove the nitrogen and phosphorus to very low limits, we still discharge 150 million gallons a day. So just a few drops and 150 million gallons in each gallon adds up day after day. And so we've got the ability to discharge quite a bit of nitrogen and phosphorus, and the bay will still get healthy. But if we take this water, and instead of discharging it to the surface waters, treat it to drinking water standards and put it in the ground, we're no longer discharging that into the Chesapeake Bay. And suddenly, we free up millions of pounds of nitrogen and phosphorus for potentially other uses, because the bay's still going to get clean, because we're not going to be discharging it at those levels. And that's how the bay model cleanup was all set up, with how much can the bay absorb on a daily basis nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediment. They've given us our allocation, we're not going to use it, so how else can we use it in the region? And we see that as the advantage of allowing our regional partners, our cities that we serve, to trade with us, basically to offset your needs to meet your basic stormwater requirements under the TMDL, so the total maximum daily load for the Chesapeake Bay. You have requirements to reduce your loads, we have requirements to reduce our loads, the agricultural community has a requirement to reduce their loads, and the three of us together have to get to the TMDL goals by 2025. Unfortunately, if we don't get there, they're going to come back after the point sources for us. And so on the next slide, I'll show you what that looks like. The other, the other big benefit we have is potentially protecting our groundwater source from saltwater, which is trying to come in from the ocean. So this is an idea of what we've been facing over the years as regulations continue to change for us. And this is nitrogen on the James River, and we've got a number of plants that discharge into the James River. And each of those blocks represents a major investment that we've made with our ratepayers' money, so your ratepayers as well as ours, to upgrade those plants to meet the Chesapeake Bay TMDL requirements. Each one of those blocks is somewhere between $40 to $100 million investment in those plants. And the lines that we have there at the beginning, the 6 million pound line, so the 2011 deadline was set for that in 2006 by the state. And before we even got to that point, the TMDL was enacted in 2010, and the numbers changed. So ours went to the purple line, which is in 2017, which is this year, we have to be at 4.4 million pounds, so we've had to make significant investments to reduce our nitrogen. And in 2022, we'll be at the 3.4 million pounds. DEQ and EPA have said, if everyone doesn't make their numbers on the TMDL, we'll have to go down to that yellow line, which is considered their backstop. And that represents another 3/4 of a billion dollars investment in our wastewater facilities to get there. What we're talking about is our SWIFT project, which, if we're not putting the water back in, we only need a little bit of nitrogen, about 500,000 pounds, to discharge only during periods where our peak flows exceed the ability to treat it to drinking water standards. And that means we've got the difference between the red line and that white line available to trade for other uses within our region. And that's really what enables us to do this trading concept with our localities. And what those look like in numbers is that. So the regional stormwater needs, you can roll everybody's up, and there's 11 permitted communities in Hampton Roads that have stormwater permits that have to make reductions. Those needs are listed on the far right. Our current loads are on the far left. And what's available for other needs if we do SWIFT, which is the second column from the left, would be the column here, significant numbers, and you can see much larger than the stormwater needs. So we've got more than enough to deal with our stormwater partners in this. So really, the trading is just this basic concept that you're going to continue to reduce your loads, because you've got a stormwater program and a permit that you have to continue to push forward. And so as people redevelop land, they have to do the right things to actually reduce loads off of those lands. So not only would we take the credits off the books, basically, that we would normally discharge and give them to you to meet your needs, over time, the loads will continue to decrease as Portsmouth redevelops and new property is developed under the new standards. It's still challenging for you to meet your requirements under your permit, even if you didn't have to do any retrofits, you've still got a significant requirement to make sure that everything is built according to the new regulations, that you've got inspections, that the existing facilities that removed nitrogen and phosphorus are maintained, that your stormwater systems maintain, and that you're investing in a resolution of recurrent flooding and things like that. So this doesn't take any of that away from you. Alls it does is relieve you of the responsibility of retrofit just to meet the TMDL. So you've still got significant investment to make in stormwater, it's just not as bad as it would have been with the TMDL. So trading really allows this to happen, because we get a time limit here. It's legal in Virginia, it was set in place back in 2006 with legislation, very four-sided when you look at the six base states. Virginia's leading the way on trading. We've been actively trading between wastewater treatment plants in the same watershed for many years. This was extended to allow us to trade with stormwater folks in the 2015 timeframe, and that allows us to make this happen. We would be trading 95% of the reduction that you need, because you're in your first permit cycle now, and you're required to make a 5% reduction. So we would make up the other 95% with trading. The timing was a little strange to work here. We're not positive that SWIFT's going to go forward yet. I talked very positively about, we know we can treat our water drinking water, we know that you can put it in the ground, Chesapeake's been doing that for a long time, but we need to prove that we can do it ourselves, and we also need to get our permits to make that happen, and that won't happen until about 2020. You're under current requirements, and your permits are going to continue to go forward, so how do we give you assurance that you don't need to be making investments today in your stormwater retrofits, and you'll have time if SWIFT doesn't go forward? And so the deal we've got set up with all the localities is, by 2025, we'd be able to say yes or no, SWIFT's going forward. We expect SWIFT to be approved and in operation in the first plant in early 2022 timeframe. But by 2025, in this agreement that we're presenting to you, we would say yes or no, that we can give you permanent credits or maintain the temporary credits for another 11 years to allow you to meet your requirements under the TMDL. In 2036, we'll no longer be able to support you if SWIFT doesn't go forward, but that timing's all built in. So it's a little complicated from a timing standpoint, but it protects you so that if you still needed to make your investments, you've got basically the same amount of time to do that. That's what the timing's about. The timing of these agreements is critical, because it gets submitted as part of our wet weather management plan obligations to the State Department of Justice and EPA. That's due on October 1st. We're going to have the 11 trading agreements attached to that to show that we've got unity among the region, as this is a great solution, and those will go to EPA in October. We're ready to move that plan forward from that point. And where we are status-wise is Virginia Beach wasn't emboldened as of last Tuesday night, they did pass the agreement, so they've now included their agreement. You all are considering it tonight. And then Suffolk has got it on their agenda in their September meeting. So we will have all 11 communities, which, you know, a lot of people say we don't work well together as a region. I think we can come together as a region when we need to, and we are, and that's a great thing. So that's where I am. I'm ready to answer whatever questions you might have.
Questions from the council? I have a question. What is the probability of SWIFT not being approved?
I'd like to say very, very slim. Again, we're not, none of this is untested, it's been done in other places in the world and other places in the country. And so we think we're at a very high percentage that we'll get it approved. I would say, I would put it below 5% that it won't, but there's not everything under my control, and I'm probably a little more optimistic than most. But I think everything's lining up right now to point us into the direction that we should get approval.
For the public's knowledge, this clearly described the mechanism of recharging the aquifer. You put a pipe in and...
Sure. So after we treat the water to drinking water quality, so we have, and we've actually had, I've drank quite a bit of that water already, because we're doing a pilot up in a York River that allows us to treat the water to drinking water quality. We've injected into the ground in big wells, so they, each well's about 3 to 4 million gallons a day. It's a deep well, so the top of this aquifer, that clay layer I talked about, is about 500 feet below us. But then the aquifer's very thick, it goes down to maybe 2,000 feet. So we've got this about 1,500 feet of nice material that we can screen the well at different levels to make sure we get the water into the ground. It goes in at a very low pressure, because we've been taking the water out of this aquifer for so long, it's basically starved for water, it wants water back. And we're already 300, 400 feet above it, so it doesn't take much pressure to put the water in, so maybe 10 pounds per square inch. So pretty low pressure. And it's going into where the water came from, so it really wants to go back in there. What's interesting is it's under, the aquifer itself's under pressure, so the water doesn't move very far away from the well. Over time, it will, but it moves maybe 30 feet a year. So the closest wells to us where people are pulling water out won't see the water we put in the ground for 100 years or more. And by that time, it's blended with the native groundwater, it's had the ability for more treatment being done by the aquifer itself, by nature. And so it's drinking water when it starts, it gets blended with groundwater, and it's maybe 100 years before... It's had the ability for more treatment being done by the aquifer itself, by nature. And so it's drinking water when it starts, it gets blended with groundwater, and it's maybe 100 years before anyone's actually drinking that water out of their well going forward. So that series of wells at each one of our treatment plants will be 3 to 4 million gallons per well. Each of our treatment plants would be sized to basically take their current flow and put it into the ground after being treated to drinking water standards. That requires a pretty significant investment at each of our treatment plants. Total project cost is $1 billion. But that is avoiding a lot of other costs, including delaying some wet weather work that we were going to do for the region that has less environmental benefit. So that explain how it's going back in the ground, Mr. Whitaker?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The aquifers in Virginia, are there in any jeopardy by these bottled water companies? I know in California, there was an issue with, I think Nestle was pumping out all this water, and it caused some issues. Is that anything?
So the geology's a little different, but essentially, our large industrial users pull a lot of water out of the ground. In eastern Virginia, those are the two paper mills. So it's the paper mill in Franklin and the paper mill in West Point are the two largest users. But there's still hundreds of thousands of other users that depend on that water. But as they pull the water out, the danger is, once you get below that top of the aquifer, you lose the storage capacity and you get more settlement. And I guess I missed that point altogether. The other added benefit of this is that as we fill those voids back up, we actually could regain some of the lost land that we're sinking, and the sea's rising. And that net difference between the sinking land and the sea rising is what causes us to be the second most threatened region for sea level rise, because it's not just the sea rising, which most other people are dealing with, our land sinking. And about half of the reason our land's sinking is because we're pulling this water out. So us putting the water back in will actually help stabilize it. In the Nestle case in California, they don't have that clay layer, so as they pulled the water out, it just collapsed. They've had 20 feet of settlement in some parts of California as a result of that. Ours is nowhere near that bad, and the clay kind of holds it together. But we'll be able to actually slow down, stop, or reverse some of that land subsidence, which could buy us many, many more years as far as sea level rise goes.
Would you remind us how you disinfect the water to get it to drinking?
Sure. It's very complicated. It's not a complicated system, but multiple barriers are built in so that we, the best way to treat drinking water these days is to have many, many different barriers along the way to make sure you get all the viruses and emergent contaminants out. So in this case, our water's very clean when it finishes our normal wastewater treatment process. You wouldn't drink it, but I mean, it looks like clean water at that point. From that point, it goes into basically the beginning of a regular drinking water plant, where we would do some mixing and floculation, so you add some chemicals to get the particles to settle out like you do in a regular water plant. And then we go from that point to let it settle down, and then it goes into a contact for ozone, which is a new water treatment method, which breaks up more of the carbon-based material that's in there. And then we go from that into a biologically activated carbon filter, and then from there to a granular activated carbon filter, and then we go into a UV ultraviolet light filter. And so those all added together create wonderful water at the end. And our tests so far have shown that we're able to remove the emergent contaminants to non-detect levels, which a lot of people are concerned about these days, and it's something, so those are personal care products, pharmaceuticals, things like that that get into our water system. And by using this complex treatment mechanism, including the ozonation, adding ozone, we're able to remove those below detection limits. And those are in nanogram per liter, part per billion, trillion treatment levels. There's a little regulated in that world right now, but there's recommendations to look for 96 different compounds. We've been looking for all of those. We don't find them at the end of that drinking water treatment process. Some of them do get through our treatment plant. The one that gets through the most is artificial sweetener. We all use it, and it's designed not to biologically break down in your body, and guess what? It doesn't. It comes right through our treatment plant. So that doesn't really pose a big harm to the environment, but that's just one indicator we have on the emergent contaminants.
Of the 11 localities that are on this list here, some have been approved and some are still pending, what is the cost and how is it, the percentage broken down across the localities on the funding or...
So we're doing this regionally, so we're not identifying funding by individual. You have some commitments to meet your TMDL, and I don't know what the exact estimate would be, looking forward for the next, until 2025, to meet your TMDL. But you would have some large investment. I know the beach put forward a number of cost avoidance by entering this agreement for the city of Virginia Beach was $315 million. I think the city of Hampton said it was in the $50 million range. So it depends on what your obligation would be, but that's cost avoided. It comes, you don't have to put that money out for this purpose at that point. So across the region, that estimate, and it's a really rough estimate, is somewhere in the $1.8 to $2 billion range.
Other questions? Thank you, sir. This was a great briefing, and Dr. Patton, very timely, because we had this on the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. I'd like to ask the mayor, the members of council.
Our next presentation will be on Mrs. Neal with the ECR 2018 State Federal Legislative Initiatives Report back.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As promised, I'm back before you this evening with the results of the survey from council as to what positions and what legislative items that you may want to go forward with. We received five responses, so out of the five responses, they were tallied up to see where the majority fell on each of these issues. And in the interest of time, because you all have this in front of you, I was just going to go over those that would be part of our draft because of the yeses. Okay, so could you go to the next five, please? Oh, go ahead. The one thing I did want to point out to, this particular one, the proposed charter change request for the payday lenders. This, we received three yeses on that. Out of the five responses that we received, this would be a legislative matter and not a charter change if it was to go forward. It just needed clarification as to whether or not this is something that council may want to go forward with as a legislative matter.
Ms. Neal. I think, if I remember correct, the last council, I thought that was an issue that we were requesting legislative group to take forward. I didn't remember it being a charter change issue.
Mayor Rhodes, Dr. Whitaker, the way it was presented, I believe it was either going to be a charter change or a legislative request. That's the way it came to me. And so when it came back, it came back with three yeses and two no's. So I guess my clarification is, do you want to go forward? This is a charter change request or legislative matter?
I believe, I believe the context that it came up was that the legislators would push for some change in the code that would allow localities to adjust those rates, not that it was purely a code change issue. So it would be requesting that the legislators have this in their package so that, because localities could have the authority to change those rates.
It would be enabling legislation?
Enabling legislation, allowing any locality to change their rates.
Right. And I know that, and I know it was an uphill challenge, but I think the sentiment was we ought to at least keep it before the legislatures.
Bill had his hand up.
Well, I was going to ask what seems to be the most likely route of getting approved, because these payday lenders, I suspect they have a pretty strong lobby up in Richmond, but they prey on the people who can at least afford the rates. And if you ride around town, they strategically locate their places near the communities that will attract the most business. So they definitely need to be regulated to a higher degree.
Let's see if we have a consensus. Do we have a consensus to put this in our package seeking an amendment to the state code to allow local governments to regulate the interest rates? Is that the consensus?
Yeah.
Anybody against that? Okay. We have full consensus to do that.
Okay. Thank you. The next one, proposed charter change, okay. On the proposed charter change request, Virginia retirement system, this one here, I noted that when you received it, it was sent to you somewhat incorrectly, because that wasn't a request for a charter change for this piece. It was a policy statement, whether or not, if this particular issue came up again, whether we should support or oppose it. And council's direction initially to me was if that came up again, to oppose it. And so that wasn't for a charter change. So if I can get clarification on that piece, as far as whether, if it comes up again, are we going to, should we oppose it?
Yes. I thought that that was the consensus, that it would be opposed.
Mayor Rhodes, what's the feeling on the council?
Well, my understanding was is, I thought four no's meant that we would not oppose. I think it's just the way it was worded. It's kind of hard to understand how the numbers were. So I, I mean, it looks like to me that there was four not opposed if resubmitted.
I believe on this one, councilman, is that the way it was sent to you was a proposed charter change request to do this, but this piece was never a charter change request initially. It was a policy position on that one.
Yeah, because I raised, I raised that issue.
Right.
And it wasn't anything relating to a charter change.
Correct.
Matter of fact, I particularly asked you to elaborate on how the subcommittee voted, because it didn't fail. There was no term that was used. And so I would, I would think that for this, that it would be opposed, because the Virginia retirement system, and I thought, I asked you about the impact study on this particular proposal.
Dr. Whitaker, I don't recall you requesting the impact study on that, but...
No, no, I didn't request it.
Oh, okay.
I was, I brought up the impact, that this would have a significant unfunded impact on Virginia. And what, in essence, if you would support this, you would be supporting an impact on the taxpayers that would be unfunded. And it would cause, it was something like a $2 billion impact on the state budget.
Correct.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we get a copy of the bill that was introduced and the impact study and make that available, so that we can all see it and read it?
Yeah.
Impact study and the bill.
The bill.
And I believe, I believe this, this bill was submitted by Senator Spruill.
Correct.
If I remember correct.
Correct.
That, that was shocking, because I've never seen Senator Spruill submit legislation of that substance. And so I question that. I'm very opposed to that. That's an issue that we've dealt with here locally. And to see the impact that it will also have on the state, I think that it would be on rise.
All right. Well, let's get the bill and the impact study.
Okay. Moving on to the submissions by Portsmouth city staff. Each one of them, sorry, each one was supported pretty much unanimously.
What was, can you go back to the previous screen?
The first one was amending the bill, House Bill 1547, which is now in code for the funding for historical African-American cemetery graves, displacement of funds appropriated for preservation. And we were looking at adding Portsmouth to the list of approved grave sites.
Everybody ready? Next one.
Okay. The next one was to revise or reintroduce a bill that we submitted last year, dealing with the port cities, development of a grant program for economic development and transportation funds for the whole cities of the port. That was supported. And then the other was amending the state code to, to add the streaming services and other items that are not being taxed right now, dealing with telecommunication taxes. So that was supported. So those three items, we had pretty much unanimous consent from council on that, from responses received.
On the state policy, I reported to you all last evening that I attended the legislative committee. Both the legislative committee of the VML and its policy committees are very much concerned about the general assembly taking away local option to control wireless broadband through zoning. In other words, let me state it a little bit differently. We'll lose our ability to regulate where towers go. And that's, that's a universal concern, at least with all the localities that were present at the legislative committee. And that was everything from Norfolk to Crewe, from Fairfax to Portsmouth, just throughout the state. Nobody said anything different.
So moving on to the state policy, support or oppose issues or monitors, beginning with the wireless broadband piece.
And that's what I was just speaking to.
Yes, of course. This was support. We said we're going to monitor. Do we want to do the monitor, or we're going to use the monitor, correct? Whatever's going on.
I think we should oppose anything that approaches on our ability to regulate through zoning, the location of wireless towers, generators.
Is that, yes? So we're going to oppose anything that's going to impact that?
Dr. Whitaker, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Last one, Doug.
That was, wasn't that the last one?
Local.
Oh, sorry. Local use of impact, thank you. That was a monitor. And we got five yeses on that one. Comments, anything? Next one, the Dedicated Transit Funding Act IV, saying that we should support that. The next one is the HR-TAC funds, was a support for using them for, it said, use not meeting legislative intent. Local funds are being used as a majority contribution, or less state funds being combined, and state funds being diverted from smart scale away from local projects. And so as a policy statement, do we want to support that statement? That was the question, and I received yes. That's, because these are policy statements, so whether we're going to support, what positions we're going to take on certain issues.
Everybody comfortable? Everybody uncomfortable?
Okay. On the local stormwater assistance funding, increasing of the funding, that was unanimous. The Water Quality Improvement Fund, increasing funding there, that was a unanimous. In the Chesapeake Bay, that was a unanimous support on that one. Programs and measures that's going to help our impacted MS4 permit localities, and as you just heard from the previous presentation, that definitely hits us. 599 funding, supporting increased funding, that was a unanimous.
Much good, I could ask one, but again, for...
Unanimous far as four. One person didn't answer that.
And again, that, this matter came up at the legislative committee, and they came down on the side of...
Ready?
So...
Oh, wait a minute.
So what is that, yes?
Water Quality Improvement Fund, Chesapeake funding, yes. Decriminalization or legalization.
Right. Is it?
It's yes for decriminalization.
Yes for decriminalization.
Yes.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm. Okay. So it's either R or both?
The question was whether, what the commission is looking at is either decriminalizing or legalizing. So that was the question. And so the consensus of what I received was that four people... And so, the consensus of what I received was that four people agreed to support decriminalization.
Okay, four supported.
Four supported decriminalization.
Shows a difference.
Okay.
One wanted more information, but still there was no answer there.
We good?
Yeah, I just, I just one question on that. Could, could we have, possibly had a city attorney speak on the difference between the two, just so they know the difference, what decriminalization versus legalization means?
Want the city attorney to speak on it?
Well, I mean, that's probably, or you can, or anybody, just so, I mean, just so we have the information out there.
The message from the discussion at the VML, it makes it a civil penalty and not a criminal penalty. Well, still, you can, it's like a parking ticket. And you're, if you're, you're allowed to carry a half an ounce.
Two ounces or less.
Yeah.
Less than two ounces, a small amount.
A small amount, so a token ticket.
Well, I guess, well, I guess part of it, you know, the way I see it, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but the decriminalization, it's basically for the lower possession amounts, it's more of a civil penalty. The difference is, to me, is if you say legalization, that just makes it totally legal.
Yeah.
And I don't agree with that, because some states have done it, but at the federal level, it's still illegal. So, you know, states that are going in opposition to the federal law, I don't think that's appropriate. And that's why I was leaning towards the decriminalization.
And that, that debate was made Friday.
Sure.
Same thing. And they showed a very interesting, there was a member of city council from Roanoke who happens to be an attorney. At some point, there's going to be a reconciliation, it has to be, between decriminalization of marijuana and possession of alcohol by someone that's 18, because that's a class four misdemeanor. And that's a, that's a big one to bite off. But, again, the report out of the legislative committee was decriminalization, not legalization.
What parameters set around it? It's decriminalization, small amounts, and the age was 21 and up. Anybody under 21, and that's where the alcohol conflict came into play.
Basically comes to a status defense because it's based on age, which that would be the ABC code that does that.
And there's, there's, would have to be a lot of research into that. It may be tied to federal highway funding, so there's, that's a whole nother issue. But it, it came out that the policy committee came down, just like, I think I hear the consensus here. Is that the consensus, decriminalization?
Yeah. And if I'm not speaking out of turn, I'm mayor, I also, VML split it into two different subjects. So it was decriminalization for small amounts, and then it was legalization for medical.
Yeah, for medical.
Right.
But that's treatment of cancer and...
Yeah. Yeah, serious diseases.
One thing that comes to mind, and this is a little bit on the subject, but off the subject, but a lot of people don't realize that even if we go decriminalization, okay, for alcohol, for a DUI, there is a alcohol blood level, .10 or higher, which basically says you're under influence. There is no level when you go into other drugs, whether they're prescription or anything else. So somebody could be smoking marijuana and get a DUID, and there's not a level in the blood. A lot of people don't understand that, because there's not, in the code, there's not a level, it's just under the influence. And if they test positive for THC, then they can get a DUID, which is equal to a driving under the influence alcohol. And that's something that a lot of people aren't aware of, and that goes for prescription drugs and anything else.
Mayor Rowell and councilman, I, in some research that I did, and looking at other states who have decriminalized and legalized over the years, and some of them have started way back in the 80s doing it there, and you're correct, because I did hear that as well when I was in Seattle, and I sat in on a forum on this matter. But I did note that there are some states that use like 4 NG or 5 NG or 2 NG level, as far as when it comes to ticketing for driving under DUI. So I haven't had a chance to look further into that, but whether or not that's even accurate to tell if that's in your system or whatever, but I do, I did see that there are some that are using those measures. So there's a five.
I think on the broad level, we got a consensus here.
Oh, definitely, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the mental health, that's the next one. Increasing programs and funding for that, we had, that's an affirmative on opioid and heroin overdose for the epidemics, supporting increased programs and funding. That was also an affirmative. On the child daycare programs. Yes, sir.
I did have a question, on the opioid and heroin overdose epidemic, that, those funds would be strictly limited to those types of overdoses or uses? It wouldn't apply to other drugs?
Like?
Like crack?
Well, this particular issue, as it stands right now, seems to be the issue of the day du jour, so to speak, because it's an epidemic nationwide, statewide.
Yeah.
And so, the funding that they're looking at trying to increase these programs, and more than an axelum, I think is what's being used to bring them back when they overdose, the funding is for that type of a drug, for, yeah.
Well, my concern is that we are approaching the opioid and heroin issue from a medicinal standpoint, but we are approaching crack and cocaine uses from a criminal standpoint. And so, my, my only concern is why is it that we're increasing funding for opioid and heroin and not for other drug uses? Why is it just focused in that area?
And maybe we ought to have a category that deals with addiction.
Well, the only thing, a lot of this is like she's talking about what we call the Narcan, that brings them back, because I've actually used that on individuals when I was on the fire department. That's something that's very specific to the heroin and this overdose, and if they're trying to fund that to get the Narcan, you know, typically, that's not done the same way, when somebody, if they overdose on cocaine, you know, they can do, and a lot of that's up to the paramedic. But this is something that is specifically, a lot of police departments are carrying it now because of that, because they're, you know, they're using the nasal instead of what we use the IV type on ambulance. But I think that's what they're doing, because that's the, it can be an immediate fix to get them to the hospital. It's, it's, if you've never seen it, it's impressive how the drug works.
Yeah, well, I, I think that our legislative team should also push for other drugs, because we do know as well documented the criminal disparities with the crack issue and how, how that was approached versus how this opioid and heroin issue is being approached. And so, I think considering a city like Portsmouth, that our legislative team should at least include that type of perspective in the argument as they approach this legislation. Not just focusing on opioid and heroin, but other drugs as well.
Okay. Anybody got any problems with that? Okay.
Okay, I'll add that, thank you. The child daycare programs, exemptions from licensure, certification of preschool or nursery. It came back as a no, that we wouldn't support this. Maintaining local government exemptions, and I need some clarification on that, because that's going against VML, VACO, and Virginia First Cities on that one. That was legislation that came out last year, that we fought up at the general assembly because of the onus that was going to place on local governments, and it felt that it was going to be an unfunded mandate, the list of reporting requirements that was being placed upon the local government. So you may not have been completely clear on that piece when you weighed in on it, so...
Anybody want to break the ice?
Well, you know, there's a high-profile case going on right now, in a daycare situation, I think in Chesapeake, where a child, the lady had too many children in the house, and one of them tragically got drowned in the pool that nobody even knew was in the pool. So I, I think, I think we need to protect the kids and regulate the industry to make sure the environment they're in is safe, and the kids are being monitored. I think relax on those, we're asking for problems.
Let's hear from other members of council.
Ms. Neal, can you elaborate on this? Are they speaking of exemption from state licensure, putting more regulation control in the hands of localities?
Thank you, mayor. And in answer to both of your questions, Councilman Moody and, Councilman Whitaker, no, there's, it's, the way the bill was, was submitted, they're not taking away exemptions or reporting requirements from private providers, that's not being done. This bill was adding more requirements on local governments that operate daycare programs. So it would have been strictly dealing with anything that the local government did, child daycare, after school, those type of programs. The law is not changing exemptions from reporting for private providers, that's already in the law.
So this, this only applies to...
Read like that.
You read the bill?
Yeah.
So this only applies to, to local-run daycares?
Exactly.
Government?
Exactly.
And, and you're saying that from VML's perspective, that this would be placing some burden on localities?
Right.
I don't know.
I just think, I just think we need...
I think we ought to measure up, just like the private sector.
Yeah, I do too.
I would want to see more information on it.
Okay, that's fair.
I, I agree, we shouldn't, you know, we shouldn't get a get out of jail free card, we should be under the same regulations, because just like Councilman Moody said, whatever we can do to protect the interests of these children.
The same, I mean, that was my comment up there, I disagree, I believe programs should be monitored by licensed agencies for oversight.
Let's do this, I think we have a majority, but we, I think it's really good to get that information that Dr. Whitaker is asking for.
Gotcha, okay. All right, and then on the state's, relationship between the state and that's been, that was an affirmative, as far, and monitoring what's going to happen with the re-benchmarking and funding for K-12, that was an affirmative. Okay. Submissions by the citizens. We had one that came in as a yes on that one, and that's the amending the constitution to abolish forfeiture of voting rights for convicted felons. We're going to go forward with that as a legislative piece. And second question is, are you going to use the same resolution, or are you going to update the resolution?
Say, ask that question again.
Okay, this was a submission from our citizens, that, the one that came up as support, it was a yes. And this is on amending the constitution, abolishing the forfeiture of voting rights of convicted felons. And then the second piece was to resubmit a council resolution that we passed a few years ago, when this was an issue up at the general assembly, supporting constitutional amendment for automatic restoration.
I think it would be useful for us to see that resolution. Can you get us that resolution? And it looks like the majority is saying yes, but let's, let's look at that, just like we did with the last one. Let's get...
So this would be a two, or this would be a legislative item, including the resolution if you were to go forward with it.
Why the resolution? I mean, it would be part of our package.
Oh, I'm just saying, how, the way it came in, it came as a legislative suggestion, so it depends on how you want to go forward with it, as a possession or a position. Okay.
Let's see the resolution.
Okay. Requiring all toll lanes remain open on the holidays, that came back as a, a yes. Legislation or policy statement?
Policy, recommend policy statement?
I thought they tried to do that already.
Yeah, what do you recommend?
I'm not recommending anything at this point, but I don't, I'm thinking, if you're going to do anything, maybe a policy statement, but again, I think they kind of do this already.
They try to do that, because I, I hear them, you know, they even make announcements on the radio when they are working, that they work for holiday weekends, so that's already being done. So that's, that's why I said no, because in my opinion, well, it was already happened.
Well, I think when it came, Mayor Hame, I think when it came up and Mrs., when she presented it the last time, my comments were, the state already monitors this, they're not closing down the tunnels during holiday weekends. So this is coming as a suggestion, but we haven't seen this done.
I think...
So it's an issue, I think we just pass it.
Okay. And then the next one that was in agreement was, no, I skipped. Starts at the bottom, modify HR-TAC legislation to allow use of funds to buy out the ERC contract, and they came back with majority yes. Is that legislation or policy statement?
I think it would be probably legislation that would need, need to take place, even though it may be a long shot, a contract's a contract. And I think anybody, ERC would be receptive to at least put it on the table for discussion and see what the number would be. Everyone has a number when it comes to a contract. And do they want a 58-year deal, or are they willing to take, take some money, rate it, maybe, even if you reduce it by, you know, 10, 15, 20 years, you've done something. Or even make a longer contract and reduce the toll. I mean, a lot of, a lot of things you could put on the table. But I, I think, I think we'd be remiss, we keep using the tolls, talking about it, the hardship it's putting on our businesses, on our citizens, so we'd be remiss not to try to somehow renegotiate or change a contract.
I agree with it, with the spirit and intent behind what, what I'm trying to accomplish here, I just don't think it's going to happen through the legislative route. I think it's going to have, which I mentioned before, I think it's going to have to occur through the court. And I don't think we've really exhausted all of the legal arguments. But, I mean, I don't mind chipping away at it.
We can pursue both avenues. Matter of fact, maybe the judicial route would put more pressure on for them to come to the negotiating table.
Yeah, I just, I just feel that the arguments haven't taken into account the demographics of this area and the economic impact that it has on a particular group. I don't think that has been brought to light, and I don't think legislation is going to address that, because it's a contract.
Can't hurt.
Well, no, I think it's three routes. First, we need legislation to change the act that created HR-TAC, because it specifies where the money goes. Second, we do need the courts, I think your argument is just absolutely correct. And then while that's going on, there's nothing to keep the state from paying the tolls. There's a problem on buying down the debt, because you have to look at the debt instrument, the bond issue. And if the bond issue says that you can't advance, refund the bonds during a certain period of time, and I think that period of time, according to the current Secretary of Transportation, is 12 years. So it's like trying to pay your loan, your, your mortgage off early, but there's a provision in your mortgage document that says, got to wait 12 years. And so that was the report that we got from the Secretary of Transportation. It was an oral report, one of the times that the governor had come to town on the tolls. So I think we ought to do three things, both what you're talking about, and ask the general assembly, if their debt service is $50 million, then put $10 million towards that debt service annually, so that the tolls can be reduced. And I'm just picking a number, it could be 20 million, it could be 30 million.
Yeah, three-barrelled approach, I mean, we'd be remiss not to do anything.
All right, everybody on board?
Okay, thank you. Then on the federal, all of the support positions were unanimous. So that was the one, and then on the federal, all of the support positions were unanimous. On the last one that was submitted by the citizen, which is a federal piece, the majority of that was three, affirming that this would be something that we could request from Congress if, if the, there was, if it was backed by facts. Yeah, that was one of the comments, if we could back it by facts. So that would be a congressional request.
Dr. Pat, you all have taken notes, can you fine tune this?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Get it back. Can I ask the coverage of the city managers?
Yes. Mayor, members of council, tonight you have before you an adoption of ordinance accepting four for-life program grant funds in the amount of $74,947.36 from the Virginia Department of Health, Office of Emergency Medical Services, appropriating said funds to the FY2018 Grants Board for the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency. You have another adoption of ordinance accepting grants in the amount of $419,306.41 from the Virginia Department of Health, and appropriating said funds for the FY2018 Grant Fund for the use by the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Leisure Services for the USDA Summer Food Service Program. You have an adoption of an ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter IV Animals of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, 2006 by amending subset F of Section 49 for the purpose of modifying the requirements for tethering of dogs. You have an adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $386,595 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, and appropriating said amount in the FY2018 Grants Fund for the use of the Commonwealth Attorney's Office in the Victim Witness Program. Adoption of an ordinance authorizing the transfer of $134,557.96 from the FY2018 Social Services Fund to the FY2018 Grants Fund for the implementation of an employment for tante participant program. Lastly, you have an adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a Hampton Roads Water Quality Credit Agreement for Chesapeake Bay Restoration between the City of Portsmouth and the Hampton Roads Sanitation District for the purpose of requiring water quality credits. That concludes the city manager report for this evening.
Any questions? This brings us to liaison reports, are there any liaison reports?
PPSC due to light agenda to meet this month.
Just want to give a report, the Stop Organization, they are looking to form a CDC, a community development corporation, and that was approved by their board. They also looking for a satellite office so that they can reach citizens here in the City of Portsmouth. They've already had satellite offices in some of the other surrounding cities. So if we have some space, we might need to let them know where they can operate a satellite office here in the City of Portsmouth. They unveiled their technology bus, and the bus will go to different localities. They're going to start in the rural areas, because those areas don't have access to Wi-Fi and the wireless broadcast that we were speaking of, so that those students may be able to get on and get to the internet and to view some things that we take for granted every day. And they also, Stop is looking to become a potential office-based opioid treatment provider, so they're working with some agencies so that they can get that covered. That's all.
Yes, I have the report, Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority Board. We met August 16th, which was Wednesday of last week. As some of the top things they were talking about there are still short 12 correctional officers. Superintendent advised that even if they fill those 12 correctional officers, they will still have to use mandatory overtime, because they're not able to cover all the shifts and all the pods. They're talking about in the future, they would like to increase the staff, and they're not sure, there's a, the Department of Corrections is doing a study on it now, and they're looking at, they're hoping add anywhere from 25 to 100 more correctional officers is what they're saying they need. And that could be anywhere, if they did the 25, that's $2 a day times 250 beds a year, that's $182,500. And as many as if they did 100 officers, it would be up to $9 a day, which would cost us our $250 beds and additional $821,250 a year. None of this has been decided, it's just in discussion. Report on maintenance for the building, they're having a problem with the kitchen floor, they're going to do a replacement, they think it's going to cost around $200,000, because it has to conform to health code requirements. They've been actively recruiting, they've taken in 57 applications in July, they have the 12 vacancies in corrections, they have four civilian positions vacant, and one was to be filled this week. In addition to that, a lot of what they're talking about is medical, they're 91% staff now, they do have a new medical director there. The cost is extremely expensive as of last week. They have 10 inmates with cancer, they have eight on dialysis, and they have 13 pregnant females, they have 65 special needs requests. They had, in the, since our last meeting, which covers two months, they've had 55 emergency room visits, 15 of them were transported by Department of Fire and Rescue. They've had 78 that had inpatient stays in the hospital, and for just the month of July, they had 52 inmates that have HIV treatment, and the cost for just the month of July was $154,000. And they're moving forward with new, new things they're working on with mental health, trying to do more evaluations and get more help. And they're trying to do a program where they even follow them once they're released to try to assist these individuals with places to live and all of that. It's not just, they're just trying not to just release them back to the street the way they were. That ends my report for tonight.
Thank you.
No report from the school board. Under items submitted by council, would like to get a consensus from council during that time, to direct the city manager to report back to council with an RFP request for the removal of the Confederate monument, as expressed at the news conference last week.
We have a need for closed session.
Ma'am, one matter, just so everyone is aware, we did make the amendment to the resolution that Councilman Moody made, and so you all have that resolution in front of you, as it was published on the website and with the modifications submitted and adopted by you.
And you've got a copy, you've got a copy, we'll read this.
Yes, sir.
Motion to go into closed session.
Moody, in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A.1, for the purpose of discussion and consideration of potential candidates for boards and commissions, and pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A.8, for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically regarding the possible appeal of the City of Portsmouth versus Plessinger, Portsmouth General District Court, case number 17-2683.
Okay, sir, a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Madam Deputy Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasburg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons? Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Row?
Yes, we're in closed session, would everybody leave?